Yes, Mr. President. It's now time for members of the City and County of San Francisco to be recognized by the Board for their meritorious service to the city. We do have two supervisors, I believe Supervisor Stephanie and Mr. President.
Thank you so much. And Supervisor Stephanie, we will go in order of roll call, so you are on.
Thank you, President Walton. Colleagues, today I would like to honor the Korean Center, a longstanding cultural pillar of San Francisco, and the Director Kate Nam, who I believe is here today, if you want to come up to the podium. Since 1974, the Korean Center, also known as KCI, has provided resources for acculturation, employment, and language training for Korean immigrants. During the 1980s, Koreans were California's most rapidly expanding immigrant population. By 1984, KCI was able to meet the demand for serving their community through the purchase of their current building at 1362 Post Street, which is in District Two. This permanent location helped facilitate deeper services, educational programming, and a regular gathering space for a thriving Korean immigrant population. By the late 1980s, underserved minorities from Russia, Southeast Asia, as well as African-Americans and Latinos could seek job training and placement at the Korean Center. By 1989, the Korean Center was offering Korean language and cultural programs for interested non-Koreans. By the 1990s, with the flourishing community, second-generation Korean-Americans had even greater impact in San Francisco. The demand for English and Korean language, business, and a master's program in Korean studies brought KCI's greatest expansion. In 2012, KCI was awarded affiliation with the Sejong Institute and shifted their educational focus to high-quality ESL programming, which remains in current high demand. Serving generations of immigrants and Korean-Americans, KCI also hosts numerous enriching courses like guitar, choir, line dancing, and Tai Chi. During the COVID-19 pandemic, KCI translated and provided over 90 resources to the community and delivered 6,000 meals and 6,240 banchan to 160 Korean seniors in San Francisco. KCI is also the lead sponsor of San Francisco's Chuseok Day festivities, which is my chief of staff's favorite holiday, and loves your food at the festival, so everyone needs to go to that this weekend in the Presidio. We are going to recognize that later in this meeting as well. But I want to thank Director Kate Nam and her whole team on behalf of the Board of Supervisors for all the work that you do for San Francisco. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Honorable Supervisor Kathleen Stephanie and the Board of Supervisors. On behalf of Korean Center Inc., KCI of San Francisco, I cannot thank you and your colleagues enough for selecting KCI for this commendation, especially on this momentous week leading up to the San Francisco very own Chuseok Festival. We are honored that you acknowledged our effort to serve the Bay Area immigration community from Korea and from all over the world, as they have made this place their home and contributed its rich history and culture. When KCI was initially founded in 1974, we worked was focused on supporting early immigrant community in learning English and gaining professional job skills. Our services not only helped them to settle in the Bay Area, but also, more importantly, helped them become active member of the city. The time has changed since then, and KCI's missions have evolved to adapt to expanded needs of today's San Francisco, to create spaces for exploring Korean culture and heritage, bridging communities and generation, and collaborating with other organizations that shares in this vision. Just as our services has expanded over time and will continually evolve to meet the changes of communities' need, our core principle has remained the same: bring our communities together. We have been doing this throughout almost 50 years. By creating collaborative opportunities and celebrating diverse cultures and heritage, they make up the beloved city of San Francisco and the Bay Region. Our city and our community have experienced and still face many challenges that require hard work and the continuous effort. A single person and a single organization cannot do this work alone. KCI is committing to serve the city and working together with our communities. Like Helen Keller said once, "Alone, you can do so little; together, we can do so much." Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Stephanie, and congratulations again to Korean Center Inc.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seeing no other names on the roster, that concludes the introduction of new business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are now at public comment.
At this time, the Board of Supervisors welcomes general public comment. We will first hear comment from those present in the chamber and then from those joining us remotely. To provide remote testimony, you must be connected to the call-in system. You should dial 415-655-0001. When you hear the prompt, enter the meeting ID, 2493-630-8747. Press the pound symbol twice, you'll have joined the meeting. You will hear the discussion, but your line will be muted. You'll be in the listening queue. Once you're connected in that queue, that's when you should press star three. The system will indicate you have raised your hand. Please continue to wait and then listen for the system to say you have been unmuted. That is your cue to begin speaking your comments. During general public comment, you may speak to the five sets of minutes considered by the Board that will be approved after general public comment concludes. Items 24 through 28, the items for consideration on the adoption without committee reference calendar, and general matters that are not on today's agenda but are within the Board's subject matter jurisdiction. Excuse me. All other agenda content will have been reported out to the Board by an appropriate committee where the public comment requirement has been fulfilled. The Board will accept written correspondence by U.S. mail using the address, the San Francisco Board of Supervisors, the number one, Dr. Carlton B. Goodlett Place, City Hall, Room 244, San Francisco, California, 94102, or send an email to the Board using the email address, bos@sfgov.org. We are joined by our partners from the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. I ask each interpreter to introduce themselves and instruction on how to connect to the remote system to provide public comment in language. We'll start with Vivian Liu for Chinese, Raymond Boras for Filipino, and Arturo Cosenza for Spanish. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I am the translator for the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. The translator will be available until tonight. If you have any questions, please call 1415-655-0001. After entering the meeting ID, 2493-630-8747, press the star three. If you have any questions, please press the third button. If you hear the notification, please mute it. If you stop speaking, it means you can continue to speak. The speakers'发言 time is limited to two minutes. The participants who participate will be优先发言. Thank you.
Good afternoon. This is Raymond from the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs. I would like to help Filipinos during this evening. To begin a public comment, please enter 415-655-0001. Enter the meeting ID, 2493-630-8747. After entering the star three, please respond to the phone number. If you have any questions, please mute it. Please respond to the phone number after entering the star three. Good afternoon. My name is Arturo Cosenza. I'm a employee of the Office of Civic Engagement and Immigrant Affairs and provide Spanish interpretation services for today's evening. Please enter the phone number, 415-655-0001, followed by the code of access, 2493-630-8747, plus the key number two times. Then press star three, and before you start speaking, wait until the system tells you that your line has been activated or you have been unmuted in English. You have only two minutes to respond. Thank you.
We thank our interpreters for being with us this afternoon, and we know that they know to jump in once we have a speaker who does attend in language. All right, now to those of you who attended this meeting in person, please line up on your right-hand side near the curtains to make your public comment. We ask that you adjust the microphone once you approach the podium and that you speak directly into the microphone so that the system can pick up your comments. We are setting the timer for two minutes. I apologize to you in advance if I interrupt your comments once the timer bell chimes. Can we please have the first person approach the podium to provide comment? Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors, staff members, city representatives, and city residents who are here. My name is Carolyn Kennedy. I live near Dolores Park. I chair my neighborhood association, Dolores Heights Improvement Club, and I advocate for more effective and compassionate solutions to homelessness with Rescue SF. I'm not here today to talk about my special issue or need. I'm here today to ask all of us collectively as city leaders and citizens to act differently, to listen more, to seek more common ground, to collaborate more, and to address the unprecedented problems confronting San Francisco. I grew up here, and the city that I see today is not the city that all of us know and love. The rampant open drug use and drug sales, the 350 people who've died from OD so far this year and the others in past years who are someone's child, someone's parent, relative, or friend. Daily, thousands are living and dying on our streets. That's not what we want our city to be known for. And the criminals who brazenly commit car, garage, and residential burglaries in our neighborhoods, and the vandalisms and thefts that are crushing our small business owners and their workers. These are the big issues staring us in the face, and I know you hear about them every day from your constituents. I hear about them too from my neighbors on the corners in my area. And the overwhelming message that I hear is the city can't get anything done. People are so angry, frustrated, fearful, and cynical that they're literally turning to the ballot box, and I don't think that's the best way for us to affect meaningful change. So just as one community leader to you, as elected leaders, and to our city, other city leaders, I ask that we act with urgency. We seek common ground and common goals, assign accountability, and spend more time working together on these big issues. If you know me, you know that's not all I have to say about these issues, but I wanted to remind us as we come back from vacation and start back to work how important.
Thank you for your comments. Can we have the next speaker? Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is John Phillips. I'm here today at the request of the Board of the Police Credit Union to follow up on the, excuse me, important letter we sent on August 17, 2022, to the Board of Supervisors regarding Resolution 317-22, which was sponsored by Supervisor Marr. Although each of you received a copy of that letter hand-delivered today, I was asked by the Board to come down and make some comments. First, the extensive data summarized in the TPCU's letter confirms that contrary to what was represented by the Mid-Sunset Neighborhood Association, which was relied upon to develop the resolution, the former TPCU site and several communities or surrounding homes have been extensively tested and evaluated in close coordination with the DTSC. Unfortunately, these same inaccurate representations from the Mid-Sunset Neighborhood Association were incorporated into the resolution. The DTSC has credited the Police Credit Union's extensive and extensive testing repeatedly, noting close collaboration with regulators, and concluding that the TPCU is not the source of any contamination, and that the very low levels of residual contamination do not pose a risk of harm to any neighbor or to anyone who might move into the affordable housing that will be constructed on the site. The data also proves that the parking lot across the street has been extensively tested. The second important point is that the resolution has triggered significant concerns about the pending process to approve the application to proceed with the sale of the parking lot across the street from the development community. The Resolutions Board is now linked to those efforts, and the TPCU is very concerned that the resolution will be cited as a reason for further delay. TPC needs final sign-off from the DTSC, and the process is now significant.
Speaker's time is concluded. Thank you, sir. If you have something in writing you'd like to submit, we'll happily hand it out for you to all 11 members.
Thank you. The letter was hand-delivered today to everyone. Thank you very much.
All right, welcome to our next speaker.
Hello, my name is James McConkey. I am a District Five member. I am a local PTA board member. I'm also just a local individual that's interested in alternative healing modalities. So some of you have been engaging with Decriminalize San Francisco, learning and educating yourselves revolving around the new and renaissance revolving around entheogenic plant medicines, fungi, and cacti. And here in San Francisco, we hold a torch of understanding of where psychedelics and entheogens came into society over 55 years ago. And so we've brought forward a progressive resolution to you, and we want to acknowledge all the engagement and all the help that we've, and opportunity we've had to speak with you.
James, can you pull the microphone closer, please?
Certainly. And I'm going to just acknowledge a bunch of my collaborators, collaborators, community members, and friends here locally that are going to be speaking behind me, revolving around the need for our local jurisdiction to decriminalize entheogens and plant medicines for alternative healing modalities. I think we're all aware of a lot of the social issues and mental health issues that exist here in our city, and this is an amazing opportunity for us to reignite and take the torch that was lit here 55 years ago. So I thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening. And it's really hot, and I appreciate you all for being here on this beautiful, beautiful summer day.
Thank you, James McConkey, for your comments. Let's hear from our next speaker, please.
Hi, hello. My name is Maryann. I am a college student living in the Bay Area, working hard to finish my degree and get into the workforce. I have come far, and I owe a lot of my progress to entheogens and psychedelics. The work I have done with certain natural medicines have helped me get through difficult personal circumstances and find motivation in my life and towards finishing my degree during the pandemic. Please decriminalize entheogens in San Francisco so that we can create a safer and healthier access, so we can create safer and healthier access for local citizens like me for safety, equity, and value. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Nico Summers. I am a San Francisco native, a small business owner, a fifth-generation herbalist, and a plant medicine practitioner. I am in support of decriminalizing entheogenic and sacred plants because it helps keep these practices from being erased in my own and many others' culture and ways of healing. Decriminalizing these plants would be the ethical choice in helping take the right step forward and allowing access to these medicines so our communities can heal as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Nico Summers, for your comments. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jacqueline Doyes, and I support the decriminalization of ethnogenic plants. Board, thank you for taking the time to consider this resolution, as I was introduced to these plant medicines about two years ago. At the time, I had been dealing with severe PTSD, depression, anxiety, and disassociative disorder for over two years. As I am sure you are aware, mental health can be complicated, and when I realized I was dealing with something much greater than I was, I sought help. Therapy helped me tremendously. I attended weekly therapy sessions and was on a waitlist to see a psychiatrist of six months to a year, the waitlist. I was trying my best, but sometimes your best just isn't enough. I was struggling. I was really struggling. After a year of initially reading about the healing potential of these plant medicines, I incorporated them into my life as a last resort for hope. Four years ago, I was struggling to wrap my mind around this idea of a Tuesday, yet alone stand before you today, working as a legal secretary and studying for the law school entrance exam. I am not dismissive of the work I've done in therapy. Just as therapy can be seen as a tool for mental health, so can these plant medicines. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacqueline Doyes. Let's hear from our next speaker, please.
I want to thank you all for bringing the resolution to recognize Chuseok Day to a vote, and we ask that you please pass the resolution.
Please pass the resolution.
Donald and I stood before you three years ago to ask you all to do the same, and we want to thank you all for passing it unanimously then. Donald is the reason why we are all here for this. Back in 2019, I brought this idea of doing this festival to the Korean Center because I wanted to expose my son to Korean culture, because I struggled to find a place for us to celebrate events like Chuseok, which is the equivalent of a Korean Thanksgiving. During this period, I discovered that the reason why it was hard was because the community was fractured. I also learned that there are many issues in the Korean community that I had not been aware of, such as extreme poverty and food insecurity with the Korean elderly, domestic violence issues, et cetera. But because of the language barrier, many in the Korean community were unaware of the free services and programs that are given by both federal and local governments. And so I worked with the Korean Center to make this more than just a festival. We made sure to have booths with Korean interpreters from nonprofits who offer services that the Korean community may not be aware of due to the language barrier. And with the passing of this resolution, I hope next year to turn this day into a vehicle by which we can educate the Korean community on how local and city governments work. Have Korean interpreters come, bless the elderly, bring kids and others in the Korean community, get them a tour of City Hall, work with legislative aides to have a civics lesson on how resolutions are created and brought to a vote, and have the Korean community come into this room and have them speak here at public comment, as we're doing today, to show them that they too can have a voice in local government and that they can affect change. Passing this resolution is just the first step for much more than just the festival. It will become a way to bring the Korean community together and give them a voice. So we once again ask you all to please pass the resolution. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you for your comments this afternoon. All right, can we hear from our next speaker, please?
Hello, my name is Christina Su. This is Addison Su and Logan Su. After witnessing the huge success of the Chuseok Festival 2019, recognizing the day for the Korean community would mean so much and help solidify our place in the Korean San Francisco community. K-culture is here to stay, from K-pop to K-music to K-drama to K-pop. It is just the beginning. Thank you for your time, and if you could please pass the resolution, recognizing Korean Chuseok Day.
Please pass the resolution. Please pass the resolution.
Thank you so much for your time.
Anna, Logan, and Christina Su, thank you for your comments this afternoon. Welcome.
My name is Christina Jun-Bentel. This is my daughter.
Naomi.
And?
Elsie.
And we ask that you please pass the resolution to support Chuseok in the city of San Francisco. I am a second-generation Korean. My parents came here in their twenties, and they were part of the earlier group that came and immigrated to the city of San Francisco, lived on Gary Street. We've come a long way. The Korean Center and the Korean community as a whole has supported each other and really brought us through to the future, and it's come a long way since my parents first came here. We'd like to support the Korean Center for its contributions and to the city of San Francisco, to families, and to the city. And then, girls, did you have something to say?
Please, please pass the resolution.
Thank you very much.
Thank you to Naomi and Elsie and Christina Jun-Bentel. We appreciate your comments. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Eunmin Kim, and this is my son, Isaac Zhou. We want to ask you to please pass the resolution of Chuseok Day. I'm the first generation here. I went to college in the United States, and then I settled down as a medical doctor working Kaiser Permanente. And then it's been very heartbroken to see how Korean community is having a hard time unifying and solidifying together. I think passing this resolution will be a big first step for Korean community, so it can be more solidified and unified, so we can be a better citizen in San Francisco and contributing better for San Francisco. So please pass the resolution. Isaac, do you want to say?
Thank you, Ms. Kim, for your comments this afternoon. Welcome to the next speaker or speakers.
Good afternoon. My name is Sewon Chung-Berah, and I am here to request your support of the resolution to recognize Korean Chuseok Day. I'm a Korean-American resident of San Francisco's District Two and a volunteer currently serving on the Korean Center Board of Directors and this year's Chuseok Planning Committee. My life completely changed when I was nine years old. My family moved to the United States from Korea, not knowing any English. We left behind all that was familiar and recreated our home, our community, and beloved traditions like Chuseok holiday. And when the pandemic hit, it changed all of our lives. To add to that heartache, the pandemic also brought out increased violence against the Asian-American community, people that look like me. During these difficult times, I was heartened to see the San Francisco community stand together and organizations like KCI step up to provide support and services to our elders and families with limited access to resources. And this same community organization has been working around the clock, many of us volunteers like myself, to organize a free, public, day-long event, the Chuseok Festival, happening this weekend, projected to bring thousands of people together safely outdoors in San Francisco's very own Presidio. As we emerge out of these fearful times, this year's resolution to officially recognize Chuseok Day is all the more meaningful. I hope to see many of you there this weekend as we joyfully celebrate Chuseok. Thank you.
Thank you, Sewon Chung-Berah, for your comments this afternoon. Welcome.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lois Youngin-Wu, and I am a high school student here in support of KCI's resolution, proposing Chuseok to be considered as the city's official celebration of a cultural day. In Korean, it's uncommon to hear someone address themselves as "I." It's not "my" country, it's "our" country. Even if it's an only child speaking, it's not "my" mom, it's "our" mom. There's an emphasis of togetherness, "us" in Korean. In the language, we say "uri." This concept of "us" is not only seen in our language, but also in our interactions, lifestyle, and culture. This is what I believe to be the spirit of Chuseok, or Korean Thanksgiving, for all of us to come together and celebrate as one, as "uri." The adopting of Chuseok Day resolution would be a huge step for the Korean community here as a whole, and especially for second-generation Koreans like me that have less of an opportunity to collect with Korean culture. Seeing that San Francisco and the United States itself is a country built up off of immigrants and the children of, recognizing Chuseok is one step towards embracing all San Franciscans. The ability to celebrate different cultures is what makes this city truly unique. So why adopt Chuseok specifically? This resolution recognizing the celebration of Chuseok is not just recognizing the date September 10th or just celebrating Koreans. The adoption of this resolution would be the celebration of a community, inviting those freshly moved, second gen, or those who have been in America for generations. The adoption of this resolution- The adoption of this resolution would not just affect the Korean community, but is a celebration of our community, "uri" community as a whole. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Lois, excuse me, Lois Youngin Wu. Thank you. Welcome to our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Toran Barrera. I am the Executive Director of the Technology and Applied Composition Program at the San Francisco Conservatory of Music Next Door. I'm here to share my support of the resolution recognizing September 10th as Korean Chuseok Day and also honoring the Korean Center, Inc., for its contributions to the Korean Center, to the American Korean-American community here in San Francisco. I first became aware of the Korean Center in 2015, when I was in desperate need of learning some basic Korean to impress my in-laws and get them to approve the marriage or proposal of marriage to my now-wife. They really came through, and after many years of marriage, we have celebrated Chuseok on a yearly basis. And the Korean Center was an incredible resource at the time and continues to be throughout the Bay, one of the essential resources to not only teach Korean language, but also share the culture. Nowadays, I have many students and a community built around Korean culture, and I think they would all love to see this pass, not just as a way to celebrate Koreans and Korean-Americans, but to share this important cultural heritage that makes our city great. Thank you. Gamsahamida.
Thank you for your comments, Toran Barrera. Welcome to our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Juno Lee, a co-founder and general partner of a tech company based in San Francisco. I would like to ask you to pass the resolution of Chuseok Day. I clearly recall that it was 1995, first time I came to San Francisco to attend a cybersecurity conference. I fell in love with the charm that San Francisco had to offer. I swore myself one day I'm going to move to here. By living here just about five years now, I can summarize the charm as cohesive communities with diverse cultural experience. Yes, there is a large population of Korean and other Asian communities in the Bay Area. Yes, as you have already heard, KCI has been relentlessly supporting the communities. These important points may already justify upcoming Chuseok Festival to be recognized as the city's official celebration of a cultural day. However, I would like to emphasize the city's charm that I believe many people also share, a cohesive community with cultural diversity. Through this Chuseok Festival, we may share Korean food, showcase all kind of Korean cultural experience that our communities could interact, and the festival goes far beyond that here in San Francisco. It is a celebration with diverse communities. It's a time and place where everyone is invited to celebrate, interact each other, and feel our community's resiliency. That's the charm that this city has embraced and people here cherish. Thank you for considering it as the city's official celebration day of the cultural day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Jun-Lol Lee. Welcome to our next speaker.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Carlos Blasola. I'm co-founder of an organization called Decriminalize Nature, Chair of the National Board. I want to give gratitude to Supervisors Preston and Ronan for introducing Resolution 25 to decriminalize our ancestral sacred plant medicines. I'm the child of immigrants to the United States from Mexico. My father was a small farmer in Jalisco, very rural Jalisco, an indigenous farmer. And my earliest memories are of being in the fields with him farming. And after my parents divorced, my mother raised us alone in San Jose, California, and it was very turbulent times for a single mother raising children in a tough neighborhood. And it wasn't until I was 48 years old that I came across anthiogens, which helped me heal some of the trauma that I experienced as a young man. I was gardening at the age of 12. I got my master's in environmental science, bachelor's in biology. Nature has always been very, very dear to me, my healing path, but these anthiogens opened me up to my ancestral path. Today, if I was to cultivate our ancestral plant medicine, which is peyote, I could face three years in prison in California. So I'm grateful for all of you taking this on today and showing the courage to allow me to grow my own ancestral plants without fear of imprisonment. Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos Blasola, for your comments. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, San Francisco Supervisors. Thank you for hearing this important issue today related to entheogenic plants and fungi practices, and gratitude to Supervisor Preston and Ronan for bringing on this important issue and for your courageous leadership. My name is Dr. Larry Norris. I am the co-founder of Decriminalize Nature National with Carlos and also co-founder of a group called Entheogenic Research Integration Education, which provides education and integration support to individuals related to anthiogens. We are in unusual times right now with increases in mental health issues, substance use issues, and general needs for personal and spiritual growth over the last few years. Wouldn't it be incredible if there was something that could help support these issues? Well, there is. Entheogenic plants and fungi are being researched for a multitude of conditions, and outside of the positive emerging scientific research, we have countless testimonies worldwide of people with significant life transformation after these experiences, as we heard earlier today already. Some even say that they wouldn't be here today without the transformation that they went through, and they're now living healthy and productive lives that was not possible before their entheogenic experiences. How can we continue criminalizing folks for seeking alternative modes of healing and growth? This is based upon bad policy from another era, and we have the opportunity to finally change that. The support from the community is not just here in San Francisco, but worldwide. Across the U.S., people are fighting to take back their access to entheogenic plants and fungi before pharmaceutical or venture capitals swallows it up. We advocate for self-agency around one's own healing process and decriminalizing the use and possession, along with the home-grow and community-based practice, so those who are interested will always have access to these healing sacred plants and fungi, including ones from their ancestral lineages. We are excited to pass this in San Francisco and build a coalition with Oakland, the first city to decriminalize nature in 2019. If San Francisco passes today, it will be the 15th city to declare with their citizens that these punitive laws around criminalizing ancient sacred plants and fungi have failed. San Francisco will be the largest city to pass policy related to anthiogens and join Oakland, Santa Cruz, Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County, Somerville, Cambridge, and North Hampton, Massachusetts, Washington, D.C., with 76% voter approval, Seattle, Washington, Arcata, Grand Rapids, and others. It's time for San Francisco to shine and take place on the right side of history and fight for their citizens to ensure entheogenic plants and fungi are accessible to anyone who wishes to partake without corporate influence. Thank you for your time and consideration, and please vote yes on supporting entheogenic plant and fungi practices.
Thank you, Dr. Norris, for your comments this afternoon. Are there any other speakers in the room who'd like to address the board? All right, seeing no one jump up, we're going to go to the remote system. We have Mr. Joe Atkins from the Clerk's Office, checking to see if we have any remote attendees. All right, hello, caller.
Hello. Yes, hi, thank you. My name is Brenda Barrows, and first I'd like to thank Dr. Supervisor Melgar for recognizing the Alioto family, and I hope everybody supports Joe Alioto Baronis for DA. But the reason that I'm calling is that we have been talking to the board over and over and over again about harassment and bullying that happens in the workplace for city employees. And I just want to let you guys know that one of the people that I had been trying to help, gay white male who had been harassed to the point where he had an initial stroke, he came back to work, and his manager doubled down on him when he came back, and he just died Saturday. So there are real consequences to all this stuff happening in the workplace, and I hope that you guys really do oversight on the EEO, because he's complained to different people and nothing has happened. I know other people in food service, same thing. So I really hope that you guys pay attention to this and do some oversight on this and find out what this Department of Equity is doing as far as the workplace goes. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Brenda Barrows, for your comments this afternoon. All right, Mr. Atkins, do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kirk, and I'm a resident from District Seven. I'm calling on behalf of Resolution 26 to support recognizing Korean Chuseok Day as this September 10th, 2002. I've been really lucky to have been volunteering with the Chuseok Festival and with KCI since the inaugural year of the Chuseok Festival in 2019 for the last four years. I'm also a digital advisor for KCI and can really attest that it is an important part of the community, as is the festival. It's a really wonderful opportunity for everyone to get together after two difficult years of the pandemic, with all of the ongoing Asian hate crime that has been attacking not only our community but across the country. It's really now an important time to show that we are stronger together, and I really hope that the entire Board of Supervisors supports this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer Kirk, for your comments this afternoon. All right, Mr. Atkins, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Hello, my name is Barry Alexander from District Eight, and I'm here to support entheogenic plant practices. Compassion has always been a part of the heart of San Francisco, championed by the likes of Dennis Perone and Brownie Mary. The compassionate use of cannabis was the genesis of the movement to legalize this plant across the nation. During the 1960s, Dr. David Smith and the Hate Ashbury Free Clinic provided compassionate harm and risk reduction to the public. San Francisco also has developed a rich and deep presence regarding psychedelic research, educational, and professional certification. UCSF has a psychedelic division, and San Francisco is home to the California Institute of Integral Studies and their Center for Psychedelic Therapies and Research. The research and certification that happens here is enabling more effective treatments for mental health. Modern research and traditional knowledge agree, entheogenic medicines are effective for treating the human condition. We need compassionate and accessible mental health care in San Francisco. Decriminalizing entheogenic medicines is an essential first step in meeting the need for more psychedelic-assisted psychotherapy practitioners, more traditional medicine cultivators, keepers, and healers. To foster access for all those in need of the healing benefit of these medicines, as I have received from these medicines, the compassionate act to take today by the Board of Supervisors is to pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Barry Alexander, for your comments this afternoon. Mr. Atkins, we have another caller in the queue, please. Welcome, caller.
Good afternoon. My name is Bohmi, and I'm a Korean immigrant living in District Five. Growing up in Seoul, I didn't really celebrate Chuseok in any traditional way, but I could always rely on my family to get together and simply enjoy a meal with one another and catch up on everyone's lives. That might not sound all that festive, but every year it felt special just to be able to step away from the daily grind and simply connect with the family members that we didn't get to see very often. I think a family, I think a holiday like this is a good reminder to everyone who lives in San Francisco that every once in a while, we all need an occasion to remind us that we can set aside our struggles and connect with those we love. Thank you all for considering the resolution to recognize September 10th as Korean Chuseok Day.
Thank you, Bohmi, for your comments this afternoon. Before the next caller, I'll just say there are seven callers who are listening, and there are two callers ready to make their comment in the queue. If you're one of the seven, you should press star three now if you intend to make comment this afternoon. Otherwise, we might take these last two callers to the end. Okay, Mr. Atkins, let's hear from our next caller, please.
Hello, Board of Supervisors. I'm here to support the resolution to recognize September 10th as Chuseok Festival Day, and thank you for allowing me to speak over the phone. My name is Karina Park. I'm the current Chair of the Korean Center Board of Directors. First of all, thank you so much for recognizing the Chuseok Festival for the past three years. Since then, we have seen a momentum and surge among not just Korean-speaking, but English-speaking Koreans participating and engaging in the community like I have never seen before in my 40 years in the United States. While this is a single day, it represents a collaboration of all types of Koreans to celebrate our culture and identity. For people like me who had never participated in the Korean community before, for the majority of their lives, to recently immigrated to second and third generations, Chuseok helps us unite and provide support to and for each other, and it's an occasion to celebrate who we are and where we come from. As you know, since the '70s, the Korean Center has played a critical role in advocating and being the voice of Koreans. We continue to serve that as that hub today, now with changing demographics and needs that have also evolved, to serve as a cultural hub where second and third generations can explore and learn about their history and create spaces to bridge gaps that exist in many facets in our community. We do this by bringing activities like Chuseok Festival, and we also collaborate with other organizations, people, and government to serve the needs of the Korean-Americans of today. Aside from being the current chair, my husband and I started a mental health clinic called Mind Therapy Clinic to tackle one of the most pressing problems of today, as you know, mental illness. I cannot stress enough the importance of building community and support systems for having a healthy mind. By recognizing the Chuseok Festival and the Korean Center, that brings this community together, you are helping and planting the seeds for growing mental resilience. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comments this afternoon, Karina Park. All right, Mr. Atkins, do we have another caller in the queue, please? Welcome, caller.
Good afternoon, Board. Hi, hello. Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, President Walton and Board of Supervisors. My name is Cheryl Thornton, and I'm a city worker, and Happy Labor Day, or Happy Belated Labor Day. I just want to say that we need equity in the workplace. As you know, or if you don't know, the CAT Bonds Committee, they settle lawsuits, and to the tune of $90.7 million of the taxpayers' money has gone to settling lawsuits for prohibited personnel practices. And I, my career has spanned over 30 years with the city and county health department, and I can tell you that I have witnessed over and over and over again, directors and department heads ignoring the policy and procedures for the city and county and harming workers. But even worse, they're discriminating, and they're discriminating against black workers the most. So not to say that other people are not discriminated against. So I know that a lot of these lawsuits, when they're settled, they come to the Board of Supervisors for you guys to settle, and I can tell you that I have worked in the city for 30 years and given my service, and what I've witnessed, it's just, it's got to stop. So I know that the Board of Supervisors, you know, the seats change, the people change from every four years or every, yeah, every four years. So, but in the interim, I think you guys need to do something about all of this, because $90.7 million going in lawyer's fees and harming people and harming their families, it's not acceptable. So thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl Thornton, for your comments this afternoon. Mr. Atkins, is there another caller in the queue, please?
Hello, good afternoon. I'm here to talk about and to support the decriminalization of plant-based medicines. My name is Jenny Stupanian. I am a criminal defense attorney and a San Francisco local. I have many clients that suffer from addiction, and it led me to a search to see if psychedelic microdosing could actually work to break the cycle of addiction. And my search led me to read many published studies by acclaimed universities, and they all support that microdosing can actually break the cycle of addiction. And my search also led me to my good friend, Dr. David Smith, who started the Hate Ashbury Free Medical Clinic in the '60s in the hate, and he recently started a new psychedelic center in the Hate Ashbury called the Hate Ashbury Psychedelic Center on Clayton Street. He cannot be here tonight to speak, but he wanted me to say a couple words. He is an addiction specialist, and he too believes that psychedelics are the key to breaking addiction. And he started the center and has people come in and take field notes and testimonials of how psychedelics have changed their lives. And one story he told me was a young man came into the center recently who was a heroin addict, and then he was taking methadone to get off heroin, but he couldn't break the cycle of methadone, which is a very intense pharmaceutical that blocks receptors. is a very intense pharmaceutical that blocks receptors, so people don't do heroin. But he was locked in the pharmaceutical cycle, and he wanted to get out of it. He started microdosing psychedelics, was able to do the 12 steps, successfully went through the 12 steps, and is now clean, sober, drug-free, no more heroin, no more methadone, just doesn't need to microdose anymore, 12 steps done. And this is just one example, and if we can do this to just a fraction of the population of San Francisco which is suffering from drug addiction, we will be moving mountains and making real progress. And I think we can all believe and agree that this town is suffering, but I believe that we need to think outside the box and really take advantage.
Okay. Thank you, Jenny Stupanian, for your comments. We apologize for interrupting. We are setting the timer for two minutes this afternoon. Do we have another caller in the queue, please?
Madam Clerk, there are no further callers in the queue.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Thank you for your great work. Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you so much to the public for calling in and showing up in the chamber. Seeing no more public comment, public comment is now closed. Madam Clerk, please call before adoption without committee reference agenda.
Yes. Items 24 through 28 were introduced for adoption without reference to committee. A unanimous vote is required for resolutions on first reading today. Alternatively, a member may require a resolution on first reading to go to committee.
Thank you, colleagues. Anyone like to sever any items?
See, Preston is on the roster, Mr. President.
Supervisor Preston.
Thank you, President Walton. I just wanted to be added as a cosponsor to item 26, the Chuseok Day.
Thank you, Supervisor Preston. Supervisor Stephanie?
I'd like to sever item number 26, please.
Thank you. Supervisor Ronan?
And I would like to be added as a cosponsor to item 26.
Thank you. Supervisor Ma?
I'd also like to be added as a cosponsor to item 26. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Melgar?
Me as well. Thank you, 26.
Thank you, Supervisor Melgar. Supervisor Safai?
Co-sponsor to item number 26 as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Safai. Supervisor Dorsey?
And I'd like to be added as well.
Thank you, Supervisor Dorsey. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on items 24, 25, 27, and 28.
On items 24, 25, 27, and 28, Supervisor Chan. Chan, aye. Supervisor Dorsey? Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman? Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Ma? Ma, aye. Supervisor Melgar? Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin? Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston?
Aye.
Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan? Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safai? Safai, aye. Supervisor Stephanie? Stephanie, aye. And Supervisor Walton?
Aye.
Walton, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Without objection, these resolutions are adopted and motions are approved unanimously. Madam Clerk, please call item number 26.
Item 26 is a resolution to recognize September 10th, 2022, as Korean Chuseok Day and honoring the Korean Center, Inc. for its contributions to the Korean-American community in the City and County of San Francisco.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Stephanie?
Thank you, President Walton. I want to thank all my colleagues for cosponsoring this resolution. I know it means a lot to KCI and to the Korean community. And I just have to say, Chuseok Day is such a fun day. It's actually like a Korean Thanksgiving, and we are very proud to have KCI in District Two and look forward to celebrating with everyone at the Presidio this weekend. And I want to thank those who came out today for public comment, especially the adorable children. I think that's what did it for my colleagues, even though they would have sponsored properly anyway. But yeah, it's just such an honor to be able to support Chuseok Day. We've been doing this since 2019. It's one of the most important and widely celebrated holidays in Korean culture, and honoring it today is a fitting tribute to our Korean-American community, which has contributed immeasurably to the history and culture of San Francisco. In its emphasis on celebrating family and community, Chuseok Day embodies the values all of us in San Francisco hold dear. No organization has done more to keep the traditions of Chuseok Day thriving than the Korean Center, which is in District Two, as I mentioned, but provides tremendous resources to the entire city and the entire Bay Area. The Korean Center has provided educational, cultural, and social service programming for over 45 years. While they have been an invaluable support to everyone in our city, I want to call out their work with underserved immigrant communities in particular. The Korean Center provides critical support services and language access programming for youth and seniors. And in this time, when immigrants are under attack all across this country, when they're slandered by people at the highest levels of government, I'm proud to take this opportunity to honor Chuseok Day and the Korean Center as just one example of the many ways immigrant communities have contributed immeasurably to San Francisco and to the United States. Thanks to the Korean American community and to the Korean Center for their decades of support, and best wishes to you all during Chuseok Day. And I want to say again, the first in-person Chuseok celebration since 2019 will take place this Saturday in the main parade lawn at the Presidio, and I want to encourage everyone to attend. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Stephanie. Thank you, colleagues. And again, thank you to everyone who came out to advocate today and for all the work to get us to this point. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll for item number 26?
On item 26, Supervisor Chan. Chan, aye. Supervisor Dorsey? Dorsey, aye. Supervisor Mandelman? Mandelman, aye. Supervisor Ma? Ma, aye. Supervisor Melgar?
Aye.
Melgar, aye. Supervisor Peskin? Peskin, aye. Supervisor Preston?
Aye.
Preston, aye. Supervisor Ronan? Ronan, aye. Supervisor Safai? Safai, aye. Supervisor Stephanie? Stephanie, aye. And Supervisor Walton?
Aye.
Walton, aye. There are 11 ayes.
Thank you. Without objection, these resolution, this resolution is adopted unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any imperative agenda items?